Notice is hereby given of a regular meeting of the Board of Directors of the District to be held at 105 Corporal for Isbell, September 9th at hour 5:30 for consideration of the business agenda below. I'll ask everyone to stand in place and make a motion.
United States, America.
Right, Heavenly Father Jesus Christ, please bless us this day and let us have a wonderful meeting to acknowledge the district business and continue to progress as we move forward. So these thanks in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Okay, we have any public comments? Hearing none. Number four, consider and discuss for possible approval of the minutes of the workshop meeting and regular meeting of August 6, 26.
So moved.
Motion by-
Second.
Was that a second by Adam?
Yes, sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pass.
Aye.
Number five, General Manager for Carlos.
Sir. Right under the item number five is you can see the, the numbers. Tested forty-one now and then negative twenty-two, positive ten with ten recovered. So, we're doing okay as, as we follow protocol. Mary was mentioning that we've been doing okay and the, the numbers can tell you there that the district is, you know, trying to do their best, other employees to make sure we abide by the protocols and, and follow all the rules. And as you can see, I'm back myself. I, uh, got it and I, I'm cleared up already, so that's good to say that. And, uh, and the second page that I have there is some, some findings that Texas continues to lead in numbers of new deaths and, and that's, uh, bad news, but hopefully that God will help us on that part and, and get better on the numbers with less people passing on. So then, uh, on the second one, the elections update, there's memorandums that came from our bond council. And, uh, one of them is for staff, you know, legal and ethical guidelines relating to, to the bond election for staff and the other one for the board members. And of course, uh, yeah, Board of Directors. And then I have an extra page in there with all the scheduling and, uh, we're go- the next one would be October the 4th mentioning that the last day to register to vote. And just anybody that hasn't registered out in the public, make sure that you registered and, and exercise your, your rights by voting and, uh, the rest of the schedule is in there, October 8th, October 13th and so forth until election day comes in. And that's all I have. You have any questions on, on any, anything?
Don't go away. Number six, consider, discuss for possible approval addendum, the group health, life panel and vision insurance.
Okay, on this one here, it's, uh, after a further review that we had, uh, on our new insurance policy, we found that fifteen employees were, you probably read the, the memo, that fifteen employees were going to have to pay way more than any, anybody else. And, uh, we're gonna ask the, the Board of Directors to add an additional assistance to, to help pay the employees, the fifteen employees. And I put the numbers in there, it, it cost another seventeen thousand per year for all those fifteen employees. At a, right now, we have a fifty-fifty, district pays fifty percent and, and the employees pay the other fifty percent for, uh, additional, uh, like spouse and dependents, additional dependents, spouse or children and, uh, family. So, we're requesting that the Board, if, if they can consider and, and assist the fifteen employees and help their families and, and pay, it'll be like a seventy percent, thirty percent. District pays seventy and then the employees pay thirty, which will equalize their pay to existing payments that they have now.
And this was a recommendation the Insurance Committee.
Yes, correct. Yes, recommendation by the Insurance Committee as, uh, we had talked about at the meeting last week.
Who's on the Insurance Committee?
Yes, sir.
Who's on it?
Scott and I.
And, and staff.
So, the proposal is to have the thousand dollar health savings account and now spend this additional seventeen thousand dollars? Is that correct?
That is correct for fifteen employees only that have dependents.
So, how are we deciding who gets the seventy percent coverage and who gets the fifty percent coverage? Explain to me the calculus there.
Okay, the, uh, the way it was calculated is that we rounded off the, uh, other, the dependents, the, the employees that have dependents, which are fifteen only, and, uh, figured that, that they would have to pay additionally seventeen, close to seventeen thousand dollars more for, for the extra family dependence, which is family and, uh, spouses and children. There's three categories in there that they would have to pay more. So, that's rounded off to seventy percent more or less and thirty for the employees to pay. And it'll be equally, uh, the same amount as they're paying right now with the existing insurance that we have.
So, let me get this straight. We have an extra hundred thousand dollars this year and we're gonna give everybody a thousand dollars. Plus, we're gonna give these fifteen people seventeen thousand dollars. So, we're increasing it a hundred and seventeen thousand dollars for the year.
Okay, no, it's just, uh, the calculation was that the district is saving a hundred and forty thousand dollars in which eighty, eighty, on, on eighty employees that we have, it's about seventy-seven, seventy-eight employees that, that we have now. So, we calculated about eighty thousand because it's a thousand dollars per employee. So, out of that a hundred and forty, you subtract the eighty thousand and, and you still have leftover about sixty thousand. And that's where we're trying to recoup the employees seventeen thousand out of the sixty thousand. I left the memo in there, if you can look at the memo and it'll explain a little bit more, uh, specifically for those employees, the fifteen employees.
Number viewing it right now, if I may, for a second, Dr. Lahn. So, at first glance, we changed insurance carriers or insurance plans?
Uh, we did change carriers, different, uh, carriers now from UnitedHealthcare to Blue Cross, Blue Shield.
Okay, so in through, through changing different carriers, the district incurred a hundred and forty thousand dollar savings. And in that savings, we opted to do the thousand, you know, prepaid cards for approximately seventy-seven employees plus three, which is what I think I suggested, just in case we hire somebody else.
Correct.
Then this seventeen thousand to subsidize those members of our, uh, employment group that, that have dependents. Okay, so I'm tracking now.
Okay.
This is for one year, this is for one year only, correct?
That's correct, yes.
And so therefore, next year, will we evaluate our entire insurance plan, the carrier, potential savings and/or costs and make, uh, another decision based on all of this next year, correct?
That's correct, yes, sir.
Those are the only questions I have, thank you.
Dr. Lahn, any other questions?
Yeah, how many years have we had, have we given everybody a thousand dollars of a health savings account? How many times have we done that before?
We never have, not a thousand dollars, no, sir. This is, this is going to be the first year.
Great, well, it's nice that we were able to incur these savings and pass some of those savings along to everybody. And I hope next year, we don't see an increase in our rates of a hundred thousand dollars because that's gonna make it a whole lot harder to continue, uh, passing along the savings. You know, if we find savings and we can distribute it, I'm in favor of that. If our costs go up, I'm not gonna be in favor of it. Uh, so I would, I would sort of advise staff that this is a great one-time bonus due to some, uh, good work saving money.
Yes, sir. And, uh, and with the, um, Insurance Committee, which was, uh, Scott was in there also. He, uh, mentioned the same thing and I agree that, you know, if, uh, maybe next year's gonna be different, we'll, and the employees are prepared for that, so we, we're on the same page on that.
I just wanna, uh, mention, um, that, uh, the, the program that we're talking about for the flexible spending account, the flexible spending cards, uh, that, that money is, uh, use it or lose it. So, the employees, if it, whatever unused funds, uh, come back to the district. Just wanted to let you know about this.
Did you hear that one, doctor?
Yes, sir, I heard and, uh, I appreciate him sharing that info and I hope we get all the money back 'cause I hope we have eighty very healthy employees and families this year.
One other que- one other question I have is, uh, you know, my wife works for a school district where they have a flex pay card and we pre-allocate fifty dollars a month to be put on that card, you know, it's, uh, pre-tax money. And, and then therefore, we get six hundred dollars a year to, you know, to spend. Is, is that option available for our employees as well with these prepaid cards?
Uh, not at this time. What, uh, the Board decided to do is just hold off maybe next year that the employees can do that.
Okay, those are, that is all the questions I have. So with all that, I would, uh, make a motion to approve.
You got a motion, need a second?
Seconds.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you very much, gentlemen, thank you very much. We'll pass the message to employees and, uh, they will, they will appreciate that thing.
Victor, y'all ready? Okay. Uh, consideration, consider remove from the table the following items. The presentation by Grant Access. I'll make the motion, I need a second.
Second.
All of them in favor, say aye.
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 All right, number eight, a presentation by Grant Access on social media for the district.
Uh, good evening. Uh, today, we have a short presentation, uh, for you guys. At this time, uh, it'll be short, uh, my wife will take over. Alicia.
Hi, good evening. Um, so last time we met, uh, we weren't too quite prepared, so we put something together for you. Just to sum up, uh, what we've accomplished in the past year. Okay, so we started off with four primary goals, uh, to create a media affairs plan, increase media and stakeholder relationships, establish social media platforms and to design a campaign and promote the water district. So, we're not gonna go over it, but, uh, we will make sure and you can send it to everybody. But, uh, just, and starting October 1st, uh, we worked on the media, uh, media affairs plan and completed that along with staff. We cleaned the Facebook. In November, we started with local, um, local events with the show Cook Off and, uh, there was staff there, it was a great publicity. In December, um, we set up the Twitter and Instagram, which then we launched in February. January, we created the Water Smart app for sure, uh, which we continue to promote. And, um, and of course, posting throughout and preparing articles. March is where we had to change our plans, uh, where we had been, um, doing a lot with the band, that would bond, uh, to market that and just promote voting. We had to kind of back off and change gears a little bit, uh, because of COVID. So, we met with staff and, uh, prepared articles that addressed the concerns for COVID and we kind of took that route on, um, voting, uh, what the district was doing to address the current situation. And so that was March, April and May. Uh, in June, we mainly focused on, um, social media as well as July, um, increasing that and voting, uh, what was going on here in the district, um, and with our employees, August. We started up in, uh, and scheduling events and, uh, planning for the bond election. Uh, this is just information we posted last, we presented last time about the Facebook followers, eight hundred and twelve. Instagram and Twitter, um, eighty-six followers, nine following Twitter, four and twenty following. So, our plan there is to increase visibility by utilizing hashtags and connecting organizations and news that's relevant. Uh, this is what we, uh, we've met with, uh, staff last week, um, to, to come down with a plan for the next three months. To do more promotion for the district and also to make people aware that there is a bond election coming up. And creating articles for that. So, uh, for example, uh, we did post something for Labor Day, just, uh, you know, community message. But then, um, committed an article today about, um, letting people know that the bond, um, election will be, will be coming in November. So, um, they haven't registered to vote, they have to go do that soon. And there are deadlines on there, um, as well. So, then that was September. October is where we start. The last day of regi- to register to vote is October 5th, uh, which we're also, prior to that, that we are, um, going to be posting messages on social media, uh, to let people know that if they haven't, take them, go pick one up, download an application from the county website and submit that before the, before by the fifth. Uh, the thirteenth is, um, the first day of early voting. So, we are, uh, going to be sending reminders to go vote, um, starting the day before, which is Columbus Day. And, uh, along with promoting, um, community, uh, this community wellness and outreach, we're going to also be promoting, uh, voting and, uh, putting out the word for the, the bond as well. So then, the last day to, uh, vote early is the thirtieth. And then there will be more messages also about, uh, about voting and election day on the third. And, um, and this will all be, then we'll also, you can, um, let us know if there's anything you need us to add, add. Plans for the future, so what we still need to do is create media affair. And for the first goal is that after November, we will meet with staff to review the second part of the plan to put it in, into action. For the increase of media and stakeholder relationships, we will continue visiting local businesses, cities and nonprofit, update them, them on the district and upcoming bond election. And that is going to be happening now. Establish a social media platform, uh, we will continue to increase presence on Twitter, Instagram, Facebook by using the hashtags to post in our local Facebook groups, um, such as the concierge pages and, um, and any, uh, yard sale pages as well. Design a campaign and promote London Water District, maintain communication with stakeholders and community and keep them informed of, uh, district business by sending out special releases and posts. So that will, we will continue, um, and also information, uh, regarding, uh, what's going on within our doors.
So, in summation, uh, what we started with, we're actually way ahead of the game. Both not only in followers, social media, but also the people that are interested in what's going on with the district now. That being our main goal, we've, uh, visited different municipalities, done presentations, different civic organizations. And the great part about it is now they're contacting us instead of us contacting them. Transparency being in the forefront, I know that, uh, they just installed, installed some new cameras that we posted online. And that's the message that we want to convey to the general public is, you know, the, the full transparency of what we're doing, how we're doing it, and not to forget that the people that are doing it are locals, they're our own people doing it. So, that's, uh, in summation, what we've done thus far, we're definitely not done yet, we're barely getting our feet wet and we expect bigger and better things to come. Be happy to answer any questions.
One thing I'd like to see, and I think it would help, uh, in regards to the bond vote, is if we could do a, a boost on the Water Saber app and also other videos.
Yes, we did a boost already on a video that we posted right before Labor Day. It was systematically done that way because people are off and they're on social media and we did get a lot of feedback on that. So, yes, you are correct. We have four more videos to do, that's right. And so, we plan to boost them as well so we can get the same result. Yes, sir, very good point.
Jason, Adam, any questions?
No, sir.
Okay, thanks, guys.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Number nine, consider and discuss for possible approval, board travel to attend the 2021 Association of Water Board Directors.
Mr., is, uh, Mr. Vice Chairman, that there is a, uh, an invitation there, registration for the early birds, the first page? And you can see the, the numbers, uh, it's virtual and in-person. So, you, you have, uh, the registration forms following through that. If y'all are interested, it's the American Water Board of Directors Midwinter Conference Registration. So, it seems like, uh, there will be an, an in-person, uh, invite to this one. So, if y'all are interested, uh, just call us here to the office, call me or call Daisy and, uh, we'll get you registered, at least to, uh, get the early bird, uh, post on it. And it'll be in Austin, Texas this year. Do y'all have any questions on that, uh, that I can probably answer? You can always call me back also.
Okay, thanks, Carlos.
Yes, sir.
Number 10, Mr. Gomez, Director of Operations.
Yes, sir. Mr. Vice Chairman, members of the Board, uh-
It wasn't an action item, Carlos. There's no action, it says consider and discuss.
That's what this one is, let me go back real quick. Well, this one is, is, uh, board, board travel. The Board needs to approve their own traveling, so we need an action item on that one to, uh, approve board travel. I believe that Scott is already wanting to attend that conference. And, uh, like I mentioned, anybody else that wants to register for it, call me. But we need an action item here to prove that.
I'll make a motion.
A second.
You got a first and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, Mr. Gomez, you're up.
Thank you.
Thank you, Daisy.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. Again, the, uh, monthly report for the month of August, comparing last year to this year. There's a hundred and twenty-five less calls this year than there wa- than there was last year in the distribution. Most of them have to do with customer service and, uh, some of them, distribution as well. And as you can see, the, the numbers did change in informational, there were about forty-six, uh, less calls. And work on meter boxes, there was, uh, forty-nine, uh, call-outs. As well as in water taps, there were twenty-two less, uh, service calls in those. On the collection side, uh, again, this, these, uh, call-outs, service calls, uh, drop, uh, from last year. There's about seventeen less service calls, call-outs in the collection side, uh, this year from last year. And, uh, most of it was in preventive maintenance. It does, it's not showing any preventive maintenance for, for the month of, uh, August. Then in the pretreatment and lift station personnel, uh, contact with new, uh, food service establishments, there were two. Contact with existing food services that, establishments, there were two. Grease interceptors inspections, there were two, the recommendations on size of grease, grease and or lint trap. There were three. Maintenance and or added micro solve, uh, at the lift stations, there were twelve preventive maintenance and lift station property. There were thirteen troubleshooting, uh, shooting lift station pumps. There was four electrical issues, they had, uh, twelve, removal of fog and clean floats that from the lift stations. I'm sorry, uh, electrical issues were seven. The removal of the fog and clean floats, uh, were twelve. The removal of burned-out pumps, there was three, uh, hazmat issues, diesel spilled in, in one of the lift stations. Uh, there was one, uh, pump installations, uh, there was two. Uh, I would like to point out that, uh, on the recommendation of the size of grease and or lint trap, what, uh, we're finding is we had a request from a, uh, from a, uh, linen service that, uh, wanted to know what size of grease trap or lint they needed. So, uh, the, uh, pretreatment manager and personnel are working on that. They, they gave them a, a site based on the amount of laundry that they're, uh, that they're going to be cleaning. And, uh, what we discussed, uh, him and I was that maybe he can go back and look at some of these hotels. We kind of deducted that a lot of these mop heads, uh, that are coming up in, in the wastewater treatment plants, is a lot of it has to do with that lint that's coming through. So, it just accumulates and it becomes a big old mop head, which is troublesome for the, for the wastewater plants. And then we did have that one diesel spill in Lift Station 29, uh, he wasn't able to trace it, uh, to where it was at. We did notify TCEQ, uh, they told us to just do what we could at this point. If it does happen again, then we need to try and make a, a real concerted effort to locate that. The problem was that we didn't have the camera, uh, the collections has, uh, without, uh, it's out of service. So, we weren't able to trace that and, and find out exactly where that, uh, who spilled that, that diesel in there. Any questions on any of this?
Mr. Gomez, approximately, how many new meters did we install, approximately?
Approximately, uh, about sixty-seven hundred.
How many have failed?
We've had, uh, a few that have failed, but not because of the meter itself. They, they run over it, they, we have had a couple of meters that have failed as far as, uh, they don't function properly for one reason or another. But there's been, I would say, about a, less than a handful, yes.
So, out of sixty-seven hundred more or less new meters, you've had two.
Thereabouts.
That's damn good.
Pretty good ratio.
Yeah, you can't beat that.
No, sir. Uh, the other, uh, item that I had brought, uh, back to the Board was something that we discussed the last time that had to do with the, uh, right-of-way issue, uh, where distribution went in there and, uh, worked on a, uh, water leak that was under a swimming pool. I did submit, submit, uh, some pictures to, so that the Board could get a better view of what, uh, the crew went through as far as having a, uh, got the, uh, the, but cooled it and the, uh, where the pool is at and the hole. And then, uh, the struggle that they went through to get that fixed. But, uh, the main reason I brought this was so that, uh, you could see towards the end, the mud that was created, uh, with that leak. And unfortunately, when they took that, uh, big excavator in there, uh, the property on, to one side on the rear was lower than the property where the excavator was at. Because it was so wet and it created mud, that, that excavator just slid over and threw a lot of mud into the, uh, into that other property. Yeah, a- as you can see there in that, the pictures, the, uh, the excavator, uh, made a mess of that property. We did notify the property, uh- We did notify the property, which was an island service that they're taking care of the property. And they weren't informed about it. And we did go back and we did tell them that we were going to clean it. The crew did go back last week and they were back again this week, yesterday. And they pretty much finished it off. I didn't submit a picture of that, but I do have one where they've already taken care of it. And they brought in some river sand, otherwise known as sandy loam. And they took all that mud out and put that river sand in there. Topsoil, yeah. The next item that I wanted to present to the board was to, it was the water plant startup. And I've asked the manager for the water plant, know he can too, if he can just go ahead and give the board a brief synopsis of what's taken place to get that water plant going. No?
Members of the board, for the startup for water plant, number one, there was a lot of items that needed to be replaced, repaired. And there was a few that needed to be added, some in preparation for the future. Some of the stuff that, I mean, we know that water plant one is not in great shape. So we had to replace, for example, chemical pumps. Some of the chemical pumps were frozen up after so long time just sitting there. Or some of the chemical itself just eats away at the pumps. For the raw water pumps, we had to replace one raw water pump to ensure that we can actually get the flow through that system. And that was one of the things that was brought in by the construction department. It was a combined effort between water plant operators and construction group. We replaced turbidity meters, repaired sludge roll motor, lab equipment, computer equipment. You know, we had to exercise and replace some of the solenoids and the valves. A lot of that filtration system is outdated. And then with the lack of exercise, we had to make sure we got all the kinks out of it. Some of the catwalk had to be replaced for the raw water pump, which is another item that was taken care of by the construction maintenance group. Some of the additions were the chlorine dioxide injection point, which they had to run pipeline, one inch pipeline from our chlorine dioxide generator all the way to our raw water line. And at that point, they had to also install a manhole so that we can get access to the system, so that we can make repairs as needed. Another thing was chlorine analyzers for the ground storage tanks. That was an addition, a requirement from TCEQ that we had to input because of our close proximity to the wastewater plant. New flow meters for raw water lines, which was something that we had to add because of our updated CT and the kept chlorine dioxide injection point. Another one was tie-in that the construction maintenance department did. It was in part with the 200 feet of one inch pipe that they put, they tied in the 10 inch line to the 16 inch line. And that's pretty much it.
Thanks, Johnny.
Thank you.
Anything else, Mr. Gomez?
That concludes the report for the operations. If there's no questions, I thank you all for this.
Sit down and get out of the way.
All right. So yeah, for the engineering report, we're pretty much continuing on water plant one and about to walk into design. And as far as, you know, one other thing on the pending for water plant is the filter management controls. We need to get some programming restored because the power outage has been out for quite a bit of time. So that's one of the additional items that we need to resolve at that water plant. Where we may, we're trying to combine it with a visit to McAllen to save on some travel expenses. But we're in the process of pricing that out. That's another item pending on water plant one as well. And so, but I guess from there, we can roll into the clarifier replacement. Siglo is to bring with prepared presentation to get a status on that design, which I guess I can hand it over to Siglo Screenway.
Good evening. It's a pleasure to be here to pleasure to be here tonight. Thank you for the time. One second while the presentation comes up and I will be as brief as possible.
Introduce yourself.
Oh, yes. Isaac Wakucha with ASOG Engineering. Thank you. All right. So let's get started. These are our update for September. Here we go. There's several parts to the project. One of them is rehabilitation of clarifier A. Last we spoke on this, we discussed the scope of work, which includes rehabbing the drive unit, refrigeration drum, refrigeration turbine, bridge platform, break up, among other components, which make a cohesive unit, making the equipment within clarifier A. We've completed that part of the process. Other parts of the project for this basin include rehabilitation of the interior, which line epoxy liner of the basin, electrical rehabilitation and upgrades, and miscellaneous piping and valve rehabilitation. So at this point, we've completed most of that. The only thing pending is we're undergoing electrical design to be complete with that part of the project. Then we can move on to clarifier B. That one is in working order for the most part. We, our scope of work for that clarifier only includes replacement of the radial lander arms. We're going to be upgrading them to stainless steel as well as replacing the drive units. So the equipment replacement, the engineering for that is complete. We're also undergoing electrical design right now before we reach completion on that one. This is a nice aerial, an aerial that we prepared to show the work that we're doing in the area, which encompasses clarifier A and B, as well as modifications or upgrades to the rapid mix and circulation basins, which are adjacent to clarifier A. And that's the bulk of the project. So some of the other parts have already completed, which were part of the previous report. We've completed the design for the flow meters that were installed in the raw water lines. Those are already up and running. We've already completed a design for the generator. This week, we work in conjunction with the engineering department to provide them with line items so they can be ready to go out for bids and begin procuring that generator. Some photos of the clarifier basin A. Some of them as well. You've got your, your location rapid mix basins adjacent. This is more photos here. So here we have, up next are a couple of sheets from the plan, that's our progress. We've got here a plan view of clarifier A. As well as a section view of the interior mechanisms of clarifier A. Same, an aerial view of clarifier B. Plan view of clarifier B with the landers are going to be replaced and the center equipment highlighted. Then we've got a section view of clarifier B. And here we have some of the work that we're going to be doing on the adjacent basins. We're still discussing with the district, how best to approach this. But that's ongoing work still. But we're being diligent on that and receiving input for the district. So we are all on agreement on how we want to deliver the best product to the district. That's just some of the electrical plans here that we have, which are underway. And this is an animation. An animation of your water treatment pen number one. Focus specifically only on the area we were working. So there's some stuff, or it's not shown, but you can see from your raw water intake all the way through the rapid mix, filtration basins, and into both of your clarifiers. And this slide is an animation of a cross section of clarifier A, which is the full recap of entire equipment within it. Finally, an animation of clarifier B, which we're only basing certain parts of the equipment. That's about it. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Hey, guys. Any questions? Moving along.
Thank you.
Charlie?
All right. Yeah, just to sum up on that clarifier is we're definitely going to see some improvements in our turbidity, which will help with that quality. You know, it's going to just get us cleaner water coming through those filters, but just doing a better job there at the clarification with these upgrades. And so, you know, I guess just moving on from there, I guess we did get a confirmation request from Black and Beach, who's working on the region plan for the state water plan for 2021 regarding our, you know, seawater desalination and potable reuse. And then, you know, we're consistent with those previous surveys we had submitted about seawater being in 2050. And as far as the potable reuse, if it's going to be called out for a 2020 decade by recent legislative changes, it has to be finalized by January 23rd or January of 2023. And so, of course, the job's not going to be done that quick. So it's getting bumped over to 2030, you know, from us, from that standpoint. So that was, you know, the main part of the upgrade. Without any more details for reuse. But that's, you know, unless there's a request to go into more detail on that, we can wrap up the report with that.
Thank you. Okay, number 12 and number 13 have to do with the annexation for the title you're going to be. So I'd like to pass on those. Hearing any objections.
Should we schedule a meeting for annexation?
No. We pass on both. Okay, number 14, Director Finance Report. You'd like to table this with, until the whole board is here, Eddie?
The Director of Finance Report? No, that's.
Well, but the other part.
Oh, the proposed. Oh, the penalties. We could certainly table that one. Let me just run through the update on the investments real quick. So I just want to let the board know that we had a, two CDs maturing in August. I'm sorry, that second one is a mistake. That should be 820. So those, we had two maturities in August totaling 1.7 million. The expiring CDs were approximately one year, were one-year CDs, and the rates were about 1.9. The rates in the market continues to decline. We did a solicitation to reinvest those, went out to 23 banks. We got five offers returned back. Best one was for 0.39. And so this is less than the rate that we got back in May of 0.6. So we went and placed both CDs with the best rate offered of 0.39. And we did those for a term of one year. So I just wanted to give the board an update on that. On item 15, if you want to go ahead and table that.
Let's table that. We have a full board. Is that okay?
Yes.
Need a motion to table?
Motion to table.
I'll second it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, number 16, consider and discuss for possible approval of the proposed budget.
So we have the final budget with the, with the changes that we made, including the insurance changes that we received. The updates were made to the Fund III, which was the budget that we had for the contingencies on the ongoing lift station project. That's what we use to balance the budget.
Okay, I think it's a good budget. I think we did our best. I was very pleased that we kept the tax rate as low as we did. This is an action item. I need a motion and a second.
Like, just to make one comment, then I'll make this motion. Last week pertaining to this agenda item, I requested a fleet inventory to be emailed to the board. Can someone take that on and get that to us at your convenience? I just would like to know the number of vehicles we have, if possible. Who's in charge of them? I know when we talked about buying a F-350, I brought this up. So at your convenience, doesn't need to be tomorrow or anything, but I'd love to see how many trucks we got, you know, how many vacuum trucks we got, just for future, you know, discussion. With all that said, I'd like to make a motion to approve budget.
I'll second it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, number 17, consider and discuss for possible approval of the financial reports. Mr. Salazar again.
It's just the July financial report.
Any questions?
No.
From the board? Need a motion, please?
So moved.
And I'll make the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I heard Adam in there too, I guess. Okay, 18, consider and discuss for possible approval, groundkeeping maintenance contract for all departments.
This year, groundkeeping maintenance is going to end. So we went for bids for the new contract. It will be a three-year contract. After reviewing the quotes with the Director of Finance and Director of Operations, we are recommending going with NHM services for $46,680 a year. This is for relocations twice a month.
Considering the other people that bid, you can't beat that price. I'll make the motion to approve. I need a second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Okay. He hasn't said no. So, okay. Number 19, consider and discuss for possible approval, purchase of gates for five district facilities.
Yeah, we need to replace some gates. This is related with the gate motors that was approved before. So we are recommending going with JIS motor gates for $14,250 to replace the gates to this.
Again, I think it's a good price considering the other people that bid. Need a motion to approve?
So moved.
And I'll second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. For the record, Adam is still on the call. He's having audio difficulty. He has also voted aye with all of the previously passed motions. He has also voted aye with all of the previously passed motions.
Okay, number 20, consider and review expenditures. Do we have any questions?
No.
Just a motion to acknowledge would be in order then.
Motion to acknowledge.
I'll second, all in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Okay, before we adjourn, just for the record, need to make note that Mr. Friedman and Mr. Abalos are not in attendance today's meeting. Did you want to say something? Mini was in here, several. Okay, okay, we're adjourned.